All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Ammison? Oh, sorry. Clanton?
Who?
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin? Here. Okay. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, move them go into closed session?
Okay. A second?
Dr. Gabriel, seconded.
Okay.
Okay. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the Act, the subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of today's regular personnel agenda, then discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to the subsection 2 of the Act, the subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of today's regular student support services agenda and consultation on legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this section of the motion, should briefing or legal advice upon them be necessary, are those set out above in subsections A and B of this motion. Bassin?
Aye.
Camps? Nope, Camps not here. Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. All right, we'll go over to the conference room.
Dr. Martin, let the record reflect that Ms. Bassin joined us at 4:03.
Yes. 4:03, Ms. Bassin joined us at 4:03.
Okay.
Can I get a motion? Or can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Dr. Martin, I move that we come out of closed executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, and it's seconded by Mr. Clanton. Please read the resolution and call the vote.
Yes. A resolution certifying the executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, the such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And I'd like to ask a motion to go into a second closed executive session.
Yeah, I was gonna move, make a motion, Dr. Martin, that we go into, back into closed executive session. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Clanton. Please read the motion, Mr. Cloud.
Yes. The motion is to move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for a discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, comma, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the Act. The subject of this session is for the discussion of two separate incidents involving the use of pepper spray at a Norfolk Public School by a school security guard and by a school resource officer. Subsection B of the motion, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other student matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the Act, the subject of this portion of the session is the discussion that I've referenced in reading subsection A above. And finally, subsection C, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation, or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of, the subject of this section of the motion is the subject that I've referenced previously in subsection A, to the extent that such briefing or advice becomes necessary.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, let's head back over to the conference room. I'd like to get this school board business meeting for Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, called to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin? Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Martin?
Here. Okay. Please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, up on, next on our agenda, we have the superintendent's report. Please proceed, Dr. Birdsong.
Good evening, Madam Chair Martin, Mr. Clanton, Vice Chair, members of the board, and members of our community. This evening, we have a video that displays all of the wonderful things that our children have been engaged with over the last couple of weeks. I want to commend the video team because they have done an excellent job on focusing on student outcomes, and so we are transitioning to that platform or that way of putting together our videos, and so we're excited about sharing that. So, without further ado, we'll see the video.
Sixth grader Cameron White is not your average middle school student. In addition to being part of the Young Scholars Program at Rosemont, she is also a published author. Her first book, Coconut Saves the Day: The COVID Monster, is about a little girl and the COVID-19 pandemic. Despite losing her own grandfather to COVID, this young author, artist, and entrepreneur continues to share her encouraging message with others.
I wanted to give people hope and inspire people to dream big and never give up on your dreams. You know, in the world, COVID happened, and you're not really able to do the things that you used to do, like go out. Now you have to have a mask, you have to keep safe so that way you won't end up catching it. So always keep safe, keep your mask on, and be positive.
Out of 200 poetry entries, two NPS students, Sharon Chamou and Bria Harvey, were selected to have their poems displayed around Norfolk as part of Norfolk Arts Poetry on the Pavement Project. This project celebrates and acknowledges local poets in the city of Norfolk. For their efforts, these students were each awarded $150.
I like poetry because I can express myself and be myself and put my feelings into writing. I searched up the definition art on Google, and then it told me art is not drawing, there's like many different definitions, there's an unknown definition of art. So I tried to create a definition for art.
I feel great because like it was my poem, and it's gonna be all over Norfolk and stuff like that. It was pretty exciting, and it looked very pretty, too.
I think she won because she is very good at expressing herself, and she's always very clear in her speaking and in her thinking, and she's also very, very creative.
Norfolk Public Schools is currently providing free one-to-one online tutoring and homework help through FEV Tutor. Students in grades 3 through 12 can receive tutoring in math, science, social studies, and English language arts. Head to FEVTutor.com to schedule a session, or access live tutors around the clock for last-minute homework help and coursework support. It's virtual and available anytime, anywhere, with an internet connection, username, and password.
We think this is another great opportunity for our students to get additional support where needed. We want to make sure we focus on the needs of our students, and I think with this virtual platform, it's really gonna give us what we need in that.
With October designated as Disability Awareness Month, it's the perfect opportunity to showcase the work being done by our learning support staff. Here's a quick look at just a few of the individuals in our district who improve the lives of students with exceptional needs on a daily basis.
A physical therapist helps students who have physical disabilities. We're helping them be able to learn how to move their bodies, be able to independently transfer into and out of their wheelchairs, as well as helping them be able to participate in gross motor activities with their peers at school. We are working with them a lot on learning how to stand up by themselves. We're helping them be able to walk. Sometimes we're helping them learn how to walk without any assistive devices, but many of our students require walkers or specialized equipment. The favorite thing about what I do working with students is being able to really empower them to, you know, maximize their potential with what they can do on their own. That is extremely rewarding, and I'm extremely blessed to be a part of that. The students are the ones doing all the hard work. I'm there as a piece of that to help them with a longer road to achieving independence, but that for me is just the most amazing thing about being able to work with students with physical disabilities.
As an occupational therapist in the school setting, we focus a lot of our attention on the child's fine motor skills, their visual motor skills, sensory processing abilities within the school setting in order for them to be successful with other aspects of their school environment. In occupational therapy lesson, you will see a lot of different things. You'll see several different options being presented to the student to use during the session. Typically, we have a fine motor activity, a visual motor activity. We'll have a lot of different activities set up for the student. My goal is for them to be as independent as we can possibly get them, so, you know, we really strive for that in the school setting, so that's my goal for all of my students, is for them to be as independent as possible. I think that my favorite part is just being a part of their journey, you know, being able to watch them grow and to be able to watch them expand on their skills and be successful in the classroom. That's really the biggest thing for me, and that brings me the greatest joy.
The role of a speech-language pathologist is many things, but what we do is we collaborate for the purpose of teaching speech, language, and overall communication skills, be it by gestures, by augmented communication, or using your words to express your ideas and intentions. During a speech-language therapy session, you usually will see a greeting to start, a review of the activities, whether we're working with a particular topic like, for instance, the power of encouragement. We tell basically a summary of what it's used for out in the public with different people so that, we give them almost like a commercial for it. This is gonna be good for your friend life, your academic life, your community life, and so it helps them buy into exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. My goal for each student is to be able to express their dreams, their goals, and intentions in any way that they are using their expression, be it words, be it technology, to be able to represent themselves and realize their dreams for jobs, community life, and just to be the best person that they can be.
To see other examples of how our learning support staff assists students with exceptional needs in Norfolk Public Schools, tune into WNPSTV47 or visit the NPS website throughout the month of October.
Dr. Martin, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Such spectacular students.
Best.
Up we have our student art display.
My mic on. Now's the time to recognize the student art display for October with Georgiana Filio, Senior Coordinator of Art and Dance Education. She will highlight the artwork from Cluster 1 Elementary Schools from pre-K 5 to 5th grade.
Elia. Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, school board members, Dr. Birdsong, administration, and guests. I'm Georgiana Filio, Senior Coordinator of Art and Dance Education for Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to showcase student art at this month's school board business meeting. The purpose of this Norfolk Public Schools art program is to develop in our students visual literacy and an understanding of the human perceptual process. The curriculum and the visual arts SOLs encourage the development of technical skills, perception, and visual problem solving, as well as an understanding of people, cultures, and times through artwork. Students are equipped with a set of lifelong skills, perspectives, sensibilities, and understandings that enhance their ability to interpret and relate to everyday experiences through art. This evening, there are several student art pieces hung in the hallway directly across from the boardroom. To offer you a mini art show without leaving your seats, each board member has been provided with a notebook containing a few of our selections. On page 1, the piece is titled "Fall." It was created by 3rd grader Abigail Savalski from Mary Calcott Elementary. Abigail used temper paint and was inspired through her love of art where she can be creative and make things. Next, we have a piece titled "Observational Drawing of a Shoe in Pencil" by Dynasty Logan, a 7th grader from Crossroads School. Her inspiration was thinking it would be nice to have an everyday object noticed in art. On page 3 has artwork by James Allen, another 7th grader from Crossroads School. He used watercolors to create this piece of art titled Alma Thomas: Style Painting. James says he was inspired by Alma Thomas's art. He loves the way her art looks, and he wanted to change it up a bit. Next is a still life done in watercolor by LaStarr Davis, an 8th grader from Norview Middle School. He is working on creating art based on how he sees things with his own eyes. He feels the bright colors express his personality. Page 5 features an abstract self-portrait sketch done in pencil drawn by artist Josiah Lozama, an 8th grader from Crossroads School. He feels that when he looks at his reflection, he thinks about how he can do all these incredible things, yet does not know how or why. Maya Larson's art is on the next page. She thinks mushrooms are really colorful and they are fun to draw. This 8th grader from Crossroads used color pencils to create this realistic mushroom sketch. On page 7, artistry created by Alexis Spearback, an 11th grader from Granby High School, who drew this narrative of a dream she had. She created water spirit and ghost in the well using an ink pen because she has always wanted to put dreams on paper. The last piece in your personal art gallery was created by Dylan Carpenter from Granby High School. His cyanotype on fabric piece titled "Freedom" was inspired by how much stress was on him with work and with school. The images made him have an emotional connection to freedom and fun. Thank you again for allowing student art to be highlighted at this month's board meeting. I hope you enjoy the mini gallery walk at your seats, and I invite you to view the student gallery in the hallway when leaving tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just so everyone's aware, we've been, in the past, we would normally have a musical, musicians in our schools come and perform for us, and we decided to integrate, focus on other student talents and, of course, very talented performers back in as well. So that's why we're switching it up, and I'm really glad we did. I mean, I'm always impressed at how creative and talented our artists are.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Up next, we have the school board clerk's report.
Madam Chair, the clerk's report notes October as Bullying Prevention Month, National Principals Appreciation Month, National Hispanic Heritage Month, Disability History and Awareness Month, and we also recognize National School Lunch Week, October 11th through the 15th, America's Safe Schools Week, October 17th through the 23rd, and National School Bus Safety Week, October 18th through the 22nd. And there's a proclamation attached to board docs noting the importance of the Bully Prevention Month recognition. And then there's one last recognition I have that's already included at your seats, which is the Virginia School Board Association's Academy Awards for points earned by board members for attendance to trainings and conferences. The Certificate of Distinction, the starfish pin goes to Dr. Del Martin, Tanya Bassin, and Rodney Jordan. The Certificate of Honor, which is the gold pin, goes to Carlos Clanton. The Certificate of Excellence, which is a silver pin, goes to Christine Smith, and the Certificate of Recognition goes to Dr. Sharon Birdsong and Lauren Campson, and congratulations to you all.
Good work, everyone. I have a question. What is the school nutrition?
You mean, when is, is School Bus Safety Week? Oh, you know, National School Lunch Week, October 11th through the 15th.
All right, so now we're gonna begin our citizens' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, for tonight's public comments, speakers have three minutes to provide public comments. A timer will alarm to signal the conclusion of your remarks. School board members do not respond to public comments. Madam Chair, our first speaker for today, for agenda items only or non-agenda items only, is Yousan Beck, followed by Courtney Skinner.
Go ahead and approach the lectern. Please speak into the microphones, and if you need to adjust the lectern, it adjusts up and down.
Do I just push the mic, or just?
It's already on with the red light showing, and you can go ahead. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Okay, so on 8 September, first day of school, I made a mistake. I'm a pre-K 4 teacher, my room is at the end of the hall, and I have a lot of students that come in and out of my hall, my room, on that first day of school, and I had a student that was not assigned to my room, and he was belonging to my room, but I didn't know that because he wasn't on my list. My mistake that I made is I put the wrong tag on him. I asked him his name, I didn't get a response. I did do attendance, I did all the things that you would normally do, but he wasn't his energy. We had tags prepped the day before, but it's, at the end of the day, I did make a mistake. I went over it and over it and over it. I ended up getting a letter of reprimand for this mistake from my principal about the fact that I lacked professionalism. I come to work on time, I dress, I'm respectful, I say please and thank you, I make sure that I'm attending trainings and doing all the other stuff. Trying to understand how this relates to professionalism. She did call the police without coming to the room to check on whether the student was there. She did later check after the police were called because the father was there, and they got a description. I don't understand why all that happened after, and I don't know why that didn't happen before the police were called. The other thing, once again, I had done attendance multiple times, student did not respond to his or her name. I admit I made a mistake, but I don't know why I deserved a letter of reprimand on the first time. There were a number of errors where nobody knew what room the child was going to because he was on no list, where even the door person who accepted him said, "What room are you going to? Is he in your room?" I said, "I don't know." They asked, they had to yell down the hall to find out what room he was in, and even then it took a minute, and then we had to wait for breakfast, and I was in the middle of the room when the child walked into the room. And I was made to feel like a failure for making this mistake as well, because I was told you lack the sense of urgency when I went over the numbers a number of times, and the one thing I tried to do was stay calm in the situation. I was told you lack a sense of urgency because you stayed calm when I'm going over the list trying to figure out, I know no student has left, but I cannot understand what is going on. No student was ever missing at the end of the day. And that was it, I don't want to say anymore, because all the suggested directives I got on how to improve and not get another letter of reprimand for this were things I had already done.
Courtney Skinner?
Oh, I'll just leave it as that. Good evening to everyone. My name is Courtney Skinner, field representative for Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I am here to represent on behalf of Yousan Beck. We all know, in the very first day of school, things can be very chaotic. Teachers are receiving new kids in their class all day long. Mr. Beck, a teacher at Berkeley Campusella Early Childhood Center, received a brand-new child that morning on a post-it note from the register's office, not a phone call or in-person notice. Throughout the day, Mr. Beck made a minor mistake on putting the wrong name tag on the child he received that morning on the post-it note. The end of the day is approaching, and the parent is here to pick up their child. Not once did Principal Ellis take initiative to walk to Mr. Beck's class to assure the child was in the classroom herself, instead she relied on second and third-hand information in this matter. As a result, Principal Ellis and Dr. Jones made a phone call to the Norfolk Police Department for a child who was not missing, but for a child who was in the class, for a child who was in the school building the whole time. The information, this information was actually left out of Mr. Beck's letter of reprimand, by the way. By that time, Principal Ellis and the parent walks down to Mr. Beck's class where the child was located again the whole time. So in result, Mr. Beck did make a mistake, we're not taking that away, but he is the only one being punished for it. Thank you.
Yes, we have Ruth Ammison?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Ammison, I've been a Norfolk resident for 31 years. I'm here to ask that maybe you guys reconsider the idea of putting solar on Norfolk schools. There's 23 public school systems across Virginia that have already taken advantage of this wonderful way of cutting their operating costs. There's also more that are considering it besides the 23 that have already done it, and of course, a lot of private schools have done it as well. And because there are so many schools that have done this in Virginia, there's standard RFPs and power purchase agreements that are available to ride on, so there is no work or time required by the school to implement this. I heard that there's a belief that the roof and electrical systems of our Norfolk schools are incompatible with solar. I own 10 commercial solar systems and have solar on my home, and I also have a degree in physics, and I'm pretty sure that there's no physical way that the electrical system is not compatible, because there is literally no interface between the solar and the school electrical system. The solar goes into the new meter that's installed when you get solar, it's a net meter, and there is no interface from the school electrical system to the solar. As far as the roof and the structural capability of the roof, I would really suggest getting a structural engineer to consult on that. I have worked with several solar installers, and I have never seen a type of roof that they can't find an install for that remains within the roof warranty and does not violate the roof warranty. There's thousands of schools across the country that have solar, and there's several good reports that summarize both solar across the nation and also in Virginia, happy to provide those. And the reason that I wanted to come now, I'm sure there's a lot going on in the schools with COVID and everything else, but there is a time criticality to this in that when the 26% tax credit ends... in that when the 26% tax credit ends, which I know it doesn't affect the schools, but it will affect the financial deal you can get from the installers. And if you wait three years or even two years, you will get a much worse financial deal than the schools that are doing it today. And I live here and I'm proud of Norfolk and I want to see our schools have those same advantages. The advantages I see for solar and that I've seen on the commercial sites that I've done, the institution saves on utility bills. You'll save on your utility bills for the life of the school. It extends your roof life. It decreases your air conditioning. It protects you from increases in rates by the utility. And it also gives the students early experience with the renewable technologies that will hopefully be part of their life for a long time. And also, it obviously helps Norfolk with carbon reduction. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Barrett Hicks, followed by James Jarman.
Good evening. I'm Barrett Hicks, Executive Director for the Concerned Citizens Association, Toward Connection, where our signature programs is KIPS, Knowledge is Power Summit, and Toward Connection Alumni Association. I'm here this evening because around 6 o'clock this morning, I received a video from one of our schools, Southside STEM Academy, that showed a major melee, outbreak of children fighting, with a message that reads, "Please advocate for our babies at Southside STEM Academy. This is just two minutes of a melee that lasted 15 minutes resulting in student and staff injuries. Students report that this is happening every day." This was never sent to the communities. No one I talked to has said that anyone warned them of this was going on in the schools and it's causing some, could cause some major problems. We know what happens within these schools goes directly back into that community or what may have come from the community first. We must have information going home to these parents when we have these situations. What I want to recommend to you guys is to start utilizing our grassroots organization to help within these schools, such as Toward Connection Alumni Association. We're on the ground with our children in these communities. Just like we know that we had a 15-year-old kid die and shot and killed in Oakleaf or Dix Park. We don't know which one. But we are actually bringing in healthcare providers from across the nation because the city said that they didn't have them. Folks, these children are our priority. We must do the best for them. This issue of, again, these kids are going through trauma and we must, we must get behind them and behind those that are trying to help them. You can't reject them because you don't like my voice or my organizational voice. We're here for the children. That's the bottom line. Let me give some, I'm a professional recruiter by trade. Guys are telling us that we can't find teachers. We can't find bus drivers. These guys got to come from behind the screens and get into these communities, into the schools with direct communication, asking for that person to come and be, come to work in Norfolk Public Schools. We got to come from behind those screens. We got to go to grassroots recruiting. That's my suggestion. If you guys don't know it, they opened up a new library in the Berkeley Campus Stella area as well. Please ensure that your principals and teachers and everyone has a partnership with that library. Our children, that's so important. We found that when you build these things in our communities, they're not welcoming to our children. But that's because we don't have that engagement. Please, again, look to bring forward that engagement with us as grassroots organizations that's trying to help, not hurt. You may not like the way the voice comes across, but we're here on behalf of children and communities. Thank you.
Next is James Jarman, followed by Amina Willard.
Good afternoon. For people that's not quite familiar with me, my name is Jones Jones. I'm the son of Willie James Jarman and I am the father to Willie James Jarman III, who attends Maury High School. Earlier this year, at the commencement of school, I was made aware of two, a few situations which cultivated ideas, which I tried to share with the school. I reached out to them several times. For some reason, I haven't waited to return a call yet, which brings me here tonight. I didn't come to complain or to throw anybody under the bus for not returning the call. I simply came to make the suggestion and volunteer my help. I thought being a parent that I was the teacher and I'm supposed to show my son the right way. But what I have learned in the 11 years he's been in Norfolk Public Schools is sometimes the kids can teach us stuff. So what I have learned is typically, when you become a junior or a senior, you have free bails at the end of the day. A form was sent home where I could have my child leave school early if he wants to because he's out of class. He is currently an honor student at Maury and taking some gifted classes and some pre-college classes. So I have no problem with Norfolk Public Schools. It's living proof, no matter what. You can do well if you endeavor to. My suggestions of what I see from this, this school year is simple. We all acknowledge that the kids fell behind a bit from doing virtual training for a whole school year. The other thing that I see, we got a lot of obesity and kids 12 and 16, 18 years old, felt like a better choice of words, out of shape. I also learned from the kids this year that gym, weightlifting, or any kind of exercise is not required once you reach 11 from 12th grade. So my suggestion is simply this, okay? I think with the kids having lost some academics for the year that they was on virtual and at-home training, the free bails at the end of the day, if not mandated, at least extend to the kids that's interested the courtesy of being able to take some extracurricular activities like calculus, statistics, and things that can't be taught well over the internet. Also, gym and weight training is something that should at least be offered to them on their free bails. I did not sign the form. I encouraged my kid to stay and do his homework and take some kind of extracurricular activity. The last thing I want to say to you is my child and I have survived spinal fusion surgery for him at the end of last year. Our home burnt down and I had shoulder surgery. So when he wasn't in therapy, I was in therapy. He's still on the honor roll in Norfolk Public Schools. It's still a good place to be. I'm not shooting in the dark. If y'all need me to facilitate and help to bring this about, you got my time. The Lord has blessed me where I got the time to do it. If you need some sponsors or you need some money to help bring it about, then you can have my first two. I'm not just asking, I'm making suggestions in the dark. I'm perfectly willing to help. Thank you for your time.
All right. Well, next we'll have Raketa Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Raketa Robinson. I'm a first-grade teacher in your district. And my purpose for speaking here tonight is to give you information about teachers in your district. We are not okay. I am not okay. Have you ever had a job where you weren't provided a break after working so many hours? Before becoming a teacher, the last 29 years, I had several jobs. As a cashier at Bradley's Department Store, I was relieved for a break. As a waitress at TGIF, I was given a break. And as an air personality at Z104 in the early 90s, I was allowed breaks. The only job I had that I did not get a break was babysitting, which leads me into my point tonight. I am here to speak on the fact that teachers are not being given the agreed-upon 30-minute unencumbered lunch time daily. I can appreciate all the reasons why teachers are not being afforded this agreed-upon break, but not receiving a 30-minute respite is not safe. If teachers must take care of themselves before they can take care of others, not being afforded a meditation or meal break is harmful in our schools. I have actually begun to interpret this disregard for my lunch break as a sign of a teacher's value. Are we not significant members of the MPS family? Shouldn't our frontline employees be regarded a little more highly? Are we not worthy of prioritizing that teachers receive their 30-minute unencumbered lunch above those other non-human resources that pop up throughout the day? A schedule that prioritizes teacher 30-minute lunch needs attention from our district leaders now. I personally do not want to go through another school day, six hours with my six-year-old scholars, without seeing another adult to provide me with a bare minimum of a five-minute restroom break. A discussion about how to do this next week or next month is too late. But to assure this important task is way above my pay grade. But I want a 30-minute unencumbered lunch break tomorrow and every day after, as agreed upon. So whatever assistance you can be to my colleagues and me would be greatly regarded. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Edwina Walker, followed by Monjera Austin.
Good evening, Norfolk Public Schools leadership. My name is Edwina Walker. I am a middle school nurse at the Academy International Studies at Rosemont. My reason for being here tonight, along with some of my other colleagues, is the COVID-19 contact tracing that has been put upon the school nurses. Originally, contact tracing was done through the health department. Then when we came back to school, we were told that we would be doing it. Contact tracing takes up about 90% of our school day. So as of right now, I personally do not feel like my students are getting 100% plus healthcare that I normally give them. I have four diabetics. I have students with ADHD meds and other meds. I have students that receive inhalers. In September alone, I called 911 30 minutes apart twice for two teachers that came to school sick. I don't think everyone understands that we provide medical leadership, authority, all of that, for everyone in the building. That includes all the way down to the custodian. So anything goes on medical, the school nurse is called. So contact tracing has been put upon us like that's a second job and we're only one person. I know that the health department was doing it. I just feel like if the school nurses are going to keep it, then we need some help because our students deserve the best medical care that they can get. And right now, you're rushing through it because we have so much contact tracing that we're doing. We have parents that don't understand COVID-19. They don't understand contact tracing. We have teachers that don't understand. Therefore, some students are coming to school with COVID-19. So then we're having to go into the isolation room. When we go into the isolation room, then someone from the main office has to come in and man the clinic. And they're not nurses. And to be honest, I don't want them taking care of my kids. I want to take care of my own kids. So we need some help. The mitigation strategies, it was put together, but I think a lot of the teachers and the parents, they don't understand it. So I'm here tonight just to say that I'm tired. I've been doing school nursing for 18 years and this is the first year that I have felt like I'm not giving my kids 100% plus. And I don't, I don't like it. And I just want to say to you, we need some help. Contact tracing is way too much in a school day along with all the other things that we're responsible for. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Monjera Austin and I'm also a school nurse with Norfolk Public Schools. I would like for the other nurses here with me to stand, please, so that you can know we are here together. We are, we are here together, united as one. Now, I'm here to talk about some of the mitigation strategies that are not being maintained within Norfolk Public Schools that is increasing the spread of the COVID virus throughout our buildings. These petitions that you have up are wonderful. It would be great if our children had these. In many of our classes, we cannot keep three feet apart. You're saying six feet is what we need. Three feet is not even recognizable in our buildings. Our buildings are overcrowded. We have too many students in the classes. We don't have enough staff to supervise the students that we have. We have no way to test children in the clinic. So if your child comes to school and that child has a headache, probably they're lacking water. Did you know that they turned off all the water fountains in every school? Our children have nothing to drink, okay? Bottled water is not given out. That's not a luxury that the children are afforded. If a parent sends a child with bottled water, great, that child is hydrated for the day. No other children will be hydrated. We don't have the funds. We don't have the capacity to hydrate all the children with, when they turned off the water fountains. That is a dangerous area that, you know, is leaving our children in critical harm. Also, the staff, the nurses, just like she spoke, we are overwhelmed with what we're doing with COVID. So in order for us to even begin to, to be able to care for our children, we, we got to get rid of contact tracing. We can't do that. Contact tracing is a full-time job and it needs to be done by somebody other than the school nurse. Now, our children are our priority. They're the reasons we are in the schools. And did you also know, we don't have every school staff with a nurse? Our nurses are pulled every single day to try to cover multiple schools. This is not effective for our children. So all I'm saying is we really need to take a serious look at the healthcare ramifications. It is causing our children harm. It's increasing the spread of COVID and it's not beneficial to anyone. Thank you.
Next, we have Rodrick Bridgers, followed by Thomas Calhoun.
Good afternoon to the board, to the superintendent, and to all that are present. My name is Rodrick Bridgers. I am a 35-year veteran of Norfolk Public Schools, working. Speaking of my connection of being here all of my life. I first would like to say to you, this is not the form that I was seeking to say this and to even bring this up, but here we are. I need to also give you a little background on me for those that do not know me. The facilities that I have managed have yet to ever fail since we have been graded or before we were graded. I have yet to fail at any time pertaining to qualifications of the job. My buildings normally come in early. My buildings are normally someplace that the district comes to do group events because primarily everything works in the building and it's clean. We're proud of that. I tell my staff, we work from the principle of pound for pound, we're the baddest thing in town. And I try to instill that pride in everything that we do. Why am I here? Well, I have to tell you that I have trained seven head custodians from ground zero, three night supervisors from ground zero. And the first one that I ever trained just retired two years ago. Just to give you a little background as to who I am and what I do. But I need to say to you tonight why I'm here. Why am I here? I've been recently reprimanded two times within the last year. And during one of these times of being presented a unjust and un, I feel, unproven reprimand, unproven reprimand, a quote, something was said to me, and I'm here to tell that to you today. What was said to me? Quote, "Mr. Bridges, the problem here is you just need to obey me." I'm sure that speaks to a lot of people. I'm sure it speaks to everyone in the room. It spoke to me, but it was not a positive thing that was said to me. Thank you for my time. Thank you to the board, and thank you to all that are here and involved.
And finally, we have Thomas Cahoon.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Cahoon. I'm president of Norfolk Federation of Teachers. Mr. Bridges is the second case we feel of unfair discipline and failure of these principles to follow the progressive guidelines that we set up on discipline. It just goes straight to reprimands, unprofessional everything, and just skip all the steps in between. I pass out to you, if you have in front of you, what is a lot of concern written by Lori Mayette. You will see five bullets there showing that Mr. Bridges does nothing at all on earth right. From what he just told you, he must be doing something right.
I didn't receive a piece of paper.
In this letter, you see five bullets that accuses him of everything he's doing and not doing, including not getting along with parents in the fourth bullet. What's not here, board members, Dr. Birdsong, is one single shred of documentation. What you see is the way it went downtown. Nothing. Not a sticky note, not an email, nothing. She wrote all these things this man does wrong and just sent it downtown by Daniel Johnson, Anthony Brown approved it. No documentation, nothing. She just wrote it. In the paragraph below these bullets, if you take a look, it appears to be four people here, okay? You got a pesticide manager. That's Lori Mayette, the lady who wrote this. It references your area supervisor. That's Lori Mayette, the lady who wrote this. She wrote this entire paragraph in the third person. I don't know why, don't look at me. Every time you see the word "her" in this paragraph, it's Lori Mayette. You spoke to your area supervisor. You spoke to your pesticide manager. You told her, there's only two people here. Lori Mayette and Roderick Bridges. I asked Mr. Johnson, "Why did she write that in the third person?" He doesn't know. "Mr. Johnson, can I get any documentation to support this letter concerning?" Over two weeks ago, nothing. "Mr. Johnson, can I meet with you, Anthony Brown, and Lori Mayette?" Not yet. This is going on all over the district. All I'm telling you is that these principals are not following the MOU, and now I'm gonna give you a perfect example. Patrick Doyle is a principal of Blair Middle School. On Monday, he decided to cut a teacher's individual planning time by 40% a day. He cut her time from 45 minutes a day to 25. When he met with the teacher, he said to the teacher, "Well, according to the SOQ, collaborative planning, individual planning, is the exact same thing. So since I took your individual time, well, you still got collaborative planning, so you all right." Now, we all know that SOQ don't say no such a thing. When she asked to see it, he told her, "I can't find it right now, but I'll get it to you." He tried to show him the MOU, which does state how much planning time middle school teachers get. And this is what Patrick Doyle said to the teacher. "I have never read that. I have never read the MOU." The teacher called me because Patrick Doyle told her to. He said, "Why don't you call your brother and talk to him?" She did. All I'm saying is, young, how many more principals in Norfolk Public Schools, Dr. Birdsong, do we have that don't even bother to read the agreement that we signed? How many more Patrick Dawes do we have?
Thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Up next on our agenda, we have consent agenda. And without opposition by request, I would like to pull the personnel report. So we'll go ahead and start by voting on the personnel report. So can I get a motion to approve the personnel report?
Madam Chair, I move for approval.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Dr. Gabriel, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for discussion. Mr. Gordon, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon and the rest of the board, for agreeing to pull this off the consent agenda. What I wanted to do was to take this opportunity. You know, on our consent agenda, we deal with a lot of items, including teacher placement. We look at tenure and staffing and several things on the personnel docket. And what I wanted to do is to take the opportunity to request, put before the board the idea of us asking the superintendent if she would have the Council of Great City Schools to come in and do a review of human resources, as we've done with other parts of our organization. I think it would be very helpful as part of our needs assessment and part of our work that we're doing with our focus on student outcomes. I know we all agree that who's standing before our students is critical in terms of successful student outcomes. And at the last meeting we had, I guess it was last week, and we were receiving the equity report. And something that stood out for me at that time, which brings me to this request again, is there was a chart that identified teacher experience. And you all may recall, I had asked at that time, because on the chart, it indicated that we could only pull data for school year 2021 and couldn't pull data for previous years. And so that concerned me. Also, in that same chart, we were looking at teacher retention, or it may have been the same one with teacher experience. The way that we were accounting teacher experience was looking at consecutive years of employment from the employees, most recent hire date with MPS. I think we need good data. I think we need good IT support, even as we were having discussions about the definition of highly effective and so on. And if you all recall, earlier in the year during the budget discussion, there was some questions that I had around human resources, and it was indicated that we had some challenges with being able to document certain data. Specifically, I recall, is it related to the pay and compensation study and things of that type. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to, again, say that I think it's an opportunity for us now to have a review of the human resources to support our work that we are doing moving forward in terms of student outcomes. So I didn't see any other place to be able to bring this forward at this time. And so that's why I wanted to be able to have it as part of the discussion associated with the personnel docket. So thank you for hearing from me.
Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Dr. Martin.
Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Well, it sounds like, you know, Mr. Jordan is looking, you know, for the board to, I guess, come to some sort of agreement, which is something I support as well. I support his request.
With all due respect, it's out of order. It's not germane to the motion. This is a motion to adopt the personnel docket. I don't have a problem with talking about it at an appropriate time, but this is not the appropriate time for it. I appreciate it being brought, but it's not germane to the motion on the floor, which is personnel. So the appropriate way would be to give it to the chair so we can actually put it on for an adoption and to have a greater discussion around it.
I'm willing to have a discussion about it. We're just not prepared to have a discussion about it tonight. This is the first we're hearing.
It was not my intent to bring it forward as a motion. I raised it several times before. I just wanted to bring it forward again so that it could be something that would appear at some point in time for discussion and action, if that's required. So I just want to make that clear.
I have it noted here, so it'll come up again, okay? Please call the question.
Basine.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
So now can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the consent agenda. Remaining consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Do I get a second? Dr. Gabriel, seconds.
Basine.
Aye.
Hampson? I'm sorry. Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Next up, we have 6.01, our monthly financial report. Is Mr. Jenkins here? Go ahead, Mr. Jenkins.
Okay. See if I can pull the report on this screen. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board. This evening, I'll review the monthly financial report for the month of September. So September covers the first three months of the year. It started July 1st. During this period, we collected $76 million in general fund revenue, which is 21% of our budget. In the previous years, we collected 16% in fiscal '21 and 25% in fiscal 2020, two years earlier. On page three of the highlights, there's a graph of revenue and spending. By the end of September, we had spent or encumbered $53.6 million of our budget, or 15%. Again, the revenue was $76 million. So comparison to prior years, we spent 15% of the fiscal '21 budget at the same time and 19% of the fiscal '22 budget. So very similar to prior years. Page four, there are two graphs, one for revenue at the top and one for spending at the bottom. The graphs display the current year data in red columns and previous year years in blue and green, excuse me, blue and orange. More detailed information begins on page five. During September, there were no budget transfers exceeding $50,000. So that is not on your report. Skipping to page 15 of the report is the quarterly report of grants. For the month, well, as of September, we were reporting $178 million of active grants for the period. We've spent or encumbered just over $100 million, leaving the balance of 77.5. Note that we have not included the most recent coronavirus award under the American Rescue Plan, or SER III. Last month, that was approved by the Department of Education, and the grant will be included in the future on reports. There is a separate item attached to this particular board item. That is your quarterly report of gifts and donations. During the previous three months, schools reported receiving $207,608 in gifts from a number of community businesses and organizations. The largest source of donations were donors' choose and we pay, both crowdfunding sites. The last page of that gift report provides a total for each school and each donor. Dr. Martin, that concludes my report for September. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions for Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, we had identified that we may have carry-forward funds in the ballpark of $20 million or so. Is that shown somewhere on this report?
No, sir, that is not. That is for the previous fiscal year. This report only pertains to the first quarter of fiscal, of this particular year we're in. The reversion funds, or the surplus, if you will, was for the previous year of fiscal '21.
Right, so as part of the funding formula, I think we had discussed at some point last year, there's something in that schedule where it may present an opportunity for the board, through the superintendent, to have some discussions about the carry-forward early in the process. Is it, can you just remind us what the funding formula schedule works? I know at some point around October, September, we get some estimate from the city. I don't have it in front of me. But can you just, if you recall at this time?
I don't recall perfectly, but early, I would say in the fall around this time, we should get some estimates from the city as far as the revenue projections for the current year and I believe next year. I know that we get an update in February for fiscal '23 next year, and we get several updates between then and June. I have not received anything at this point. I will say that our staff, and I think the city staff as well, are focused, I want to say staff, their finance staff is focused on closing last year. The audit report is expected to be out towards the end of November or early December, and that would certainly have the reversion information or the surplus for the previous year. But I don't have any information yet from the city as far as to what our share of next year is. The reversion amount for fiscal '22, or excuse me, for fiscal '21 last year is, I've gotten numbers between $5 and $8 million that we would receive from the city in excess of the amount that was included in our budget. So that would be added to the reversion. But I don't have final numbers, but I've seen estimates between $5 and $8 million.
And the action that we took with awarding the pandemic bonuses, what source did we end up using to accommodate that?
We used vacancy savings that have already and are expected to accrue for the rest of the year.
So is that something that would show up in this report or would show up in next month's report?
Really will not show up. We used, there's money in personnel lines already, so you won't really see that as a budget transfer because it's a transfer within. see that as a budget transfer because it's a transfer within two budget categories that they're between one type of salary and another, and a bonus account. So I don't think you will see that, but we had reported the cost of that. My recollection is it's around 800, between 800 and 900, I think. It was eight something.
If it's possible, is it some, can we consider, will you all consider maybe having some notation so that as we're looking at the year-to-date expenditures versus previous years, that at least we can note in a couple of those categories why it may be a little different than?
It's in the salary and, and benefit account that, and it's about, as I said, I think it's in the eight to 900,000, but I can, we can, we can designate that in the future. Yes, sir.
And, and then?
Oh, I'm sorry, certainly. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say to Dr. Martin and the rest of the board, I know it's been a while since we've had joint meeting with council, and I'm not sure what communication may be happening now, but as we are moving further into the year and getting the opportunity to get out in front with, if we want to have any discussions or adjustments to the funding formula or looking at the big picture of where we are in terms of the utilization of pandemic funds, just would ask, could that be something you all put on your, put on your radar? And I'm sorry, that just reminded me, one final question.
Yes, sir.
We, one of the public commenters mentioned bottled water. Is bottled water an eligible expenditure through use of any of the CARES Act money in order to support health and welfare of students and staff in the building if, if it's determined that it's necessary?
I would suspect it would be.
Thank you.
And if I may, I would think that it, it would be, but I know for SER III, we had discussions about including fillable water stations, fillable bottled water stations in our schools.
Right.
And that's something that I'm adamant about moving forward.
Yeah, I do recall that, and actually, I had another parent call me from another middle school with the same concern.
Yep.
And, and I know we talked at, I think it was at the last meeting, about how certain funds could be used for school supplies.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I'm not, you know, it's your bailiwick, but I'm just saying, if, if indeed there's a water access issue and we have resources to, to support it, I just wanted to make sure that was something we could do.
We have, we're, we're getting ready to issue that order now because I know we just put budget entry in for the, for the purchase of those water filling stations.
Right. Yeah, I'm just saying, and I don't know.
It's, it's on its way, but it'll be, it'll take some time to install.
Right, right. So I just wanted to raise that as if it wasn't eligible.
It's a legitimate concern, and I agree wholeheartedly with Nurse Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Before we adjourn, I believe there's one person. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Yes, seconded by Dr. Gabriel. Sorry. Ms. Tanner, please.
Basine.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye. Thank you. We have one person who was on the list for public comment.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Rochelle Cuffey. I'm the nurse at Norview Middle School. I just want to elaborate on some of the things that my colleagues came before you and said. We'll just add something in addition to that. Back in 2013, when Norfolk Public Schools took over the school health division from Department of Public Health, we were told that there will be some policies and procedures set in place for nursing. Policies and procedures is what we go by. It's kind of like our road book for day-to-day, how we make our decisions. Eight years later, there still is none. It causes a lot of confusion among administrators, among nurses, when it's time for us to try to make decisions as far as when students are ill, when we have to bar them from school, when there's no immunization requirements, when they lack the immunizations requirement, required by the state, and they have to go home. It's so inconsistent across the board. Different schools are doing different things, different administrators are doing different things, because we have no set policies and procedures. And not having none can create a lot of litigation issues for not only the nurses, but Norfolk Public Schools. Because, you know, this is what we go by, and it's working on our license, and if we don't have any set standards or any consistent practices, it is just, it's a whole bunch of confusion. And that's one of the things that is in dire need for the nursing program for Norfolk Public Schools. We need to have some standards for your nurses, we need to have some policies, we need to have some procedures put in place because we have different nurses doing different things. And that's not safe at all, not for us, not for the students, and not for Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Have a safe, bye, gentlemen.
Thank you.